December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. And remind everyone that this meeting is being video conference. So will the clerk please call all those present?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
And we're all here, thankfully. So, welcome, everyone. I'm going to read the consent agenda, minutes to approve for November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, November twenty-third for two thousand and twenty, November thirtieth for two thousand and twenty, November thirtieth of the executive session not to be released. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgson?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. So it's time for the town manager's report. Stephen?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I did submit a memo in the packet last week with some updates on a few things. And then I just realized that I did, I did miss one from Public Works that I will incorporate here. So the, the big thing for this update is really the lead item in my written report, and that is vaccination planning. And so the emergency services, police and fire, as well as the health department have started having kind of preliminary conversations about, and I say preliminary conversations, the early stages of planning for operating vaccination clinics. It's not a hundred percent clear from the state if that's going to end up being a local responsibility, but we are moving forward that it'll, that it'll be conducted in a manner similar to testing where the state will set up some operations, but then municipalities will be able to set up their own as well. That's an assumption, but it's an assumption we're planning on. And so there actually was a, I don't know if it was H one N one or a previous pan, I say a previous pandemic, but a previous illness that, that was threatening to become a pandemic. There was a, an emergency dispensing site plan. If, for that one, it was CCHS. And so right now, we're in the process of evaluating that plan. Obviously, this is a very different pandemic than that plan was written for. And so we're working also with schools to, to look at logistics and concerns about scheduling. And we're looking at options for how, like, what, like a temporary shelter to house a possible vaccination clinic. So all the, all the types of planning efforts that we would do for something like this, we are actively in the, in the process of, of doing. We definitely want to stay ahead of this. We have been in discussions with Emerson Hospital to get a sense of what they're doing as well. So I wish I had more details. I wish I could tell you that on this date, we're going to set up a vaccination clinic, and we're going to have this many doses per day, and here's how it's going to work. I hope to have those details soon, but I don't have them today. But just, just know that the departments are working collaboratively to make sure that we are ready when, when those details are available to, when those decisions are ready to be made, we will be ready to make them. So another big, oh, sorry, Jane.
Just on that note, in other conversations I have, as my, as a liaison to the, the health, the board of health, there's been discussion about looking for volunteers for vaccination clinics. I know I've been in receipt of some wonderful offers from the town, from residents in the town. It may be too soon to consider any of this, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, it's an excellent point. I think one of the things that's gonna be the turning factor in how this is staffed is how many spaces we're gonna have to, to actually do vaccinations in terms of the place where we, where we do it. And there are, I hate to, hate to be that guy, but there are insurance and liability considerations where certain types of volunteers enjoy statutory protection and other types of volunteers do not, especially when it comes to medical procedures. And so one of the things we are gonna need to do is look at, is there a particular type of volunteer that not only has the skill and availability to be a vaccinator, but also does not incur a liability along with it? Again, that's going to depend on how many vaccinated, how many volunteers do we need and where are they going to be? And so that is one of the details that we definitely need to continue to work on, but I just, there's, there's a few variables that are in there. It's not like volunteering for, you know, like a community festival where anyone can do it. It's a pretty, the liability has to be a, a, a concern. I think we are fortunate in Concord to have a great number of people with medical training or background who would enjoy some of those statutory protections. So I think in talking to Susan Rask, I think we're pretty confident that we'll have a group of volunteers that is not only protected, but also qualified to help us with this. So that's one of the things that I think we will be a great, will have a great benefit to the community. Any other questions about the vaccine process? Like I said, right now, we're just going with the information that we have, which isn't very much. We have not gotten a director from the state or anything else. So we are kind of going, like I said, we're just really following the process we, we went through for, you know, what other municipalities have gone through for testing. We did not end up setting up a testing location for a variety of reasons. Not the list, least of which was at, for most of the, of the duration of the pandemic, the, the case numbers in Concord didn't seem to justify the level of resource that would have required to do that. I will say, knowing what we know now, you know, if this was six months ago, we probably would be doing that because of the way case numbers are going in, in Concord. And not just because of MCI Concord, case numbers in, in the general population have also been trending up. But now we feel like that now is the time to shift towards the vaccination focus and, and make sure that we are ready for that and really do everything we can to end the pandemic, which includes reminding everyone to continue to wear masks, continue to social distance, continue to wash your hands, continue to do all the thing now, now more than ever. So when it comes time to do the vaccines, we really truly can put this behind us. So anyway.
Excellent news. Thank you very much.
Thanks. So another, I think a relatively good news thing, the Cambridge Turnpike, which we haven't talked about in a while. I think I, last time I reported on it, there were some issues with some of the construction, meaning some of the specifically wing walls on a culvert had had some, had had some issues where they seem to be pulling away from the rest of the structure, which kind of delayed the project a little bit, and those have been resolved. And so we are now working towards getting it ready to be opened. I don't, I don't have an exact date for you, but I would say an announcement will be forthcoming on potentially reopening a, a soft reopening, if you will, of the Cambridge Turnpike. To, but under every scenario, final paving won't be until the springtime. So it'll be, it'll be open with binder code essentially, but that's some good news. That's, that's, that project has been long and arduous, and I, I haven't done a good job on reporting how difficult that has been and what a a resource consumer it has been, but it, it's going to be great when it's done. So the police department coordinated, I'm sure some of you saw this on the news, there was a a program that Codes for Vets, that Home Depot and the Kraft Foundation, and another number of other veterans organizations coordinated. Concord Police participated in that and brought some buckets back. Our veteran service officer, Dick Ruge, has been giving some of them out, as well as Kate Hodges through her work with, with Human Services. So that was a nice program that brought some joy here at the holiday season and some warmth for, for some local veterans. At the CMLP board meeting this past week, there was a lot of talk about batteries, you know, batteries for solar generated power are going to be a critical ingredient to our ability to really achieve our sustainability goals long term. And CMLP is really working on a couple of options for that. It, it's the availability of them and the price of batteries and, and what they can currently do, it's, it is a fast-moving technology, but I don't know if we're, if we're a hundred percent there, or the one that really works for us is a hundred percent there, but that's, it's something that CMLP is going to be actively evaluating, and I think those is a priority to move forward on. And then a couple of the quick items. We do have the townhouse renovations. They're moving forward. There was some issues related to the, like I said, I think I reported, we tear open an old building and find stuff. We now have, that, there were some issues with the number of layers of flooring. Again, that's just, like, if you've ever renovated an old house, that sounds not surprising at all. And so that, the working through all that and some of the design changes that were needed pushed the project back. So we're looking at a substantial completion date of about April fifteenth, which would mean we would be back online and offices would return to the townhouse in about May. As we, as we sit here now, that's, so that's tentatively when we think we're going to be back in there. And then, of course, on, on Wednesday night, there is a, sorry, on the sixteenth, there is a forum for White Pond that starts at six thirty via Zoom. So if people have, you know, questions or want to learn more about the project, tune in. And then the permitting process at Duro has been moving forward, and so I think we'll see some progress on getting that project out to bid as well. And then one of the things that continues to take up a lot of time of the planning department is the Center in Maine subdivision projects. There's been a lot of, you know, discussion about that, so Matt is, I think, intimately familiar with. And so that continues to be worked on. There was a lot of talk about it. I think pre-COVID, so the last winter, it was, it had, it went within the PRD was, was being evaluated. So that project is still being reviewed and going through permitting. And so more to come on that, anyway. That's about it for me. Oh, I, also, there was a letter in the packet. We included the governor's letter about the police reform bill. And Chief O'Connor and I did review the, the governor's letter, and I think generally are supportive of the governor's position, which we, we think makes some reasonable changes or amendments to the bill that was approved by the legislature. And right now, the, he has sent it back to the legislature with those proposed amendments, and it's unclear what's going to happen from there. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I had a question related to the battery update for CMLP. There'd been some related discussion, I assume, on time of day billing. I mean, how did that progress? Is that connected directly? Has it independently been approved? What, how is that going?
So they just, they just finished approving all of the rates. They, they had a pretty significant cost of service study done, and that led to somewhat of a restructuring of some of the rates. And I know there was a lot of discussion at the CMLP board about cost, about time of, about time of, you know, time of consumption, time of use. And I'd be honest with you, Matt, the, the detail on that, I just, I don't know, but I'm happy to, to, you know, catch up with Dave Wood offline till he can explain it in detail. But I know there was a lot of discussion about it. I just, I don't remember if it ended up being in their final rate structure, because I know they talked, I think they, that carried over to a second meeting.
Yeah, it just seems to me that, you know, the whole battery-solar connection only really makes sense if you have that kind of a variable building.
Well, I think you, you can, as people add solar, the one thing I do know is that you can generate too much solar electricity for the local grid to handle. And so the battery enables, the battery enables, batteries enable us to generate, you know, more solar and solar energy locally and not overload the system.
I just add, and I don't remember which conversation or what meeting this was discussed at, it could have been at the last week's select board meeting, so forgive me if I've forgotten that. But as we add more and more electric vehicles, both on the residential level and as a municipality, each one of those vehicles has the potential to be a, a, a charging or a battery option if it's placed right, you know. So it's to Matt's point, not only do you need the time of use metering, but you need to be able to have charging stations placed in ways where you can capture that that opportunity. I know I'm in, I've worked with the folks who've, who've designed exactly this kind of, let's call it grid efficiency, grid battery storage in large, you know, for large municipalities like, you know, LED WP. I'm not suggesting that Concord rises to that, that need. I'm just saying we should be thinking about how that can also add, you know, transportation batteries.
And, and so the, the, exactly right, Jane. And I think that the point of what they're, they're, the point of their effort now is to bring in some experts who can help assess that and, and kind of design that capacity. So that, that was the, the, I did, the, the, the short takeaway is they are, they are going to look to get some expertise through either consultants or some other options to help them kind of design this going forward, because they, it is a priority. Susan?
I just wanted to comment on the time of use issue vis-à-vis car chargers, and we've just gotten one in Concord Green, and there is, the, the rate from two PM to seven PM is significant, significantly more than from seven AM to two, or seven PM to two PM. So there's a, you know, that rate factor is already factored in for that purpose.
Yeah, it's definitely, that, that definitely is peak demand time across the system. And like I said, there was a very, they had a very detailed discussion about the rates and all these issues, and I apologize. I was learning as I was observing, and so I, I don't, I, I wish I could give you the answer, but I do know they talked about it. So why don't we catch up later, and I can give you a more specific answer.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. So I think we'll move on to the chair's report. I'll just add to the long list of things that are going on right now that to remind everyone to return the resident survey by this Friday. That is the due date. And please do it online if you can. All right. The next item on the agenda is an update on APP sixty-three, and I see Kate Hanley is here. We could hear from the discussion last week that this update on the policy, as well as related items, is pushing us on the infrastructure for electrification and, and storage. And we just actually had a demonstration of how it's pushing us with some of the comments and interplay with the town manager and some of the questions that came from the select board. So Kate, thanks for turning this around so quickly. If you would start by pointing out the changes that were made, that would be helpful for everyone.
Sure, and thanks, thanks for having me back, everyone. So I, you know, tell you every tiny little change, but I incorporated all of your feedback from last time, some links and references where you suggested to do that around the kind of EPA emissions numbers that were overlapping and a little confusing, just to make sure that the, the references were there. The most significant substantive changes were under the section five, the vehicle procurement. Terry made a good point that the exemption language was a little confusing, so I clarified that to be clear that the vehicles that are exempt are exempt from the miles per gallon requirements, and that they're encouraged to follow the, the other aspects of the policy as well. And then further down in the document, made a couple of changes based on Jane's suggestion, adding in a section about leasing that we should evaluate whether leasing is a good option in, in term as we wait for an electric option to become available. And then just adding in an additional kind of elaboration under the vehicle transition plan that we'll be working on soon. That includes charging and the vehicle-to-grid infrastructure that. So that's pretty much it. I'll take any, any questions you have about the, the changes.
Any questions from the board? Okay, so this will be an amendment to our existing APP sixty-three?
This will replace the existing policy, because much of it be, is, is duplicative. So replace the current policy.
All right, so by doing that, I just want to capture the previous dates of approval for the, the APP sixty-three. So that's why I'm suggesting that this is an amendment to our existing policy.
One of the, one of the suggestions coming from the senior management team was to give this a new number and make it a new policy, and then
retake your sixty-three?
Yeah.
Current sixty-three? All right. And that's just because of the amount of copy, quite frankly, I would guess, at this point, in terms of people trying to be able to get through it. I, I certainly have no problem with that, but we certainly could still reference, I think, in adopting the new policy number, the previous policy number and amendment dates, just so we have some trail there.
I think on the, on the first page of the policy, where it says that this policy replaces APP sixty-three adopted in two thousand and thirteen, we could link to that document, too, if we wanted to make sure that people could look back into the previous version.
Yeah, that would be helpful as well.
Okay.
You're good. Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this and others. So I would like to entertain a motion. Susan, I think you're on mute. Susan, you're on mute. Can't hear you.
Got it, sorry. A few clicks for some reason. Move to approve APP sixty-three update, sustainable fleet policy dated December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
To be assigned a, a new policy number.
Isn't that what sixty-three is, or?
Well, it's, I, I think the recommendation that it is that it will be assigned a new policy number with reference to APP sixty-three.
To be assigned a new policy number. Reference to APP sixty-three.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. So thank you, Kate, and it'll be interesting to see all the things that go forward from this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item has to do with the extension of the parking meter suspension through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. As all of you are aware, there certainly has been a significant amount of cooperation with the business district over the last few months in support of the challenges they've faced during the pandemic, which are surely going to continue through late spring, early summer, at the, at the least. So a recommendation has been made. We are, we have currently approved the suspension of parking meters through the end of December. And given how limited the activity is and difficult the winter months are, the recommendation is to continue this through the thirty-first. So do I hear any comments or further discussion on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to extend the non-enforcement of parking meters through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgson?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Thank you, everyone. So as all of you know, at the last town meeting, the town voted to approve the TIF for Junction Village, and today we're going to get an update on its execution in the EACC hearing. Stephen, would you like to comment?
Sure. So we did, the, the TIF agreement is finalized. The developer signed it. The EACC, which is the state, the state, I guess, committee that oversees the approval of TIFs, I did have a, a meeting last week to review and approve. It, it actually did a lot of business on their agenda. And the TIF for Christopher Heights was approved, actually as a bundle with a lot of other TIFs. So it was not, there wasn't a lot of discussion about it, but it did get approved from the state. And so the last thing that is needed to complete the approval of the state funding for the project is just the submission of the fully executed TIF. So it will be, I think we're circulating that for electronic signatures of the board, and we may circulate it for wet signatures as well. So that's kind of a, a milestone for the project.
All right, thank you. Okay, any comments or questions about that from the board? Okay, if not, I'd like to move on to the consideration of the annual town meeting calendar, a draft of which was in our packets. So this includes election dates. Or at least, we hope it includes the election dates that we'd like to proceed on. Here, here's one of the complications, and, and the town manager may want to comment further. There is some question about whether or not we're going to be able to do the caucus via Zoom in terms of whether or not that is allowed. And that's currently being reviewed, and I think Carrie's checking with other clerks in terms of how they're handling this. I think we mentioned last week that Bedford actually has some legislation in the works that would, and they're going to go ahead for a caucus that's even earlier than ours in January, and hope that that legislation gets passed, even if it's retroactively. They did so with their town meeting as well. That's how they handled it. So there, you know, there, you know, there are challenges here with all of this, but we really have, people need this, you know, in town, in our committees and our chairs and everybody. We need this document posted, even if we have to come back and revisit it. Stephen, am I forgetting something in my comments here?
No, I, I would just, just build on them a little bit, Linda, just to suggest that the Bedford analogy is, is the correct one for us. We are required to have one based on the town meeting vote that established the caucus. And I did confirm today that, that with counsel, that you cannot do it via Zoom as it is, as it is constructed. There was no, what enables us to do Zoom meetings, the select board, was special acts of the legislature and/or governor's emergency orders. And they didn't do one for a caucus, because they're, not every community has one. And so I'm told, the manager of Bedford and I have talked quite a bit about this, and I, I'm told by her that there are thirteen towns that have this issue. I do know that the governor's office is working actively with Bedford, and I think some of the other communities to address this. But because the election is tied to a set number of days after the caucus, the legislation that Bedford has filed gives the select board the ability to cancel the caucus, not postpone, because if you were going to be able to postpone it, then you would have to be able to change that set number of days between the caucus and the election, and there needs to be some certitude about when the election is going to happen. So so right now, we are, we are working on, with, with our legislative delegation to find out, you know, is our option to be included with the Bedford legislation, because that's basically the same situation we have? Or there's going to be something more general done that the governor will hopefully approve before the end of the legislative session? So we're, we're looking at options, but we, we, in terms of doing it on Zoom, or being able to have some flexibility with the dates, that doesn't appear to be one of the options we have, because of, like I said, the, the other legal requirements that go along with, with, with the, with the deadlines. I know Kari is here, so if anybody, she could certainly weigh in if I misstated or missed something.
Wonderful. Kari?
I don't, I don't have anything to add. I haven't been involved in these conversations, so what, so does this mean, Stephen, that we're not clear on what the election date will be at this point until we have the caucus issue resolved?
No, I think what, what No, I think what we're presenting with the calendar is setting the caucus and the election date with the understanding that if for some reason there's, we just can't go forward with the caucus, whether it's weather or some, or just can't find a viable way to do it outdoors or indoors for that matter, do we have the option, does the select board have the option to cancel it? Is what the, is really the open question, but I agree with Linda. The community and the boards and committees need to have it nailed down. So the election, if the calendar gets approved, then the election date would be set for March 25th.
Okay, thank you.
And so the other issue with the election date is location. Originally, we were hoping that it would be in the townhouse, but at this point, it's clear it will not be. So I just want to make sure that's on the table. Yes, Terry?
A question. I didn't understand. There's an option to, if necessary, to cancel the caucus? And I thought we were required by charter to have a caucus, and I'm not following that.
So the legislation that Bedford has filed gives the select board the option to cancel it?
Then, if the caucus is canceled?
Then it's nomination paper, sorry. So 40, there's a deadline of 49 days prior to the election to file nomination papers. And I believe that Bedford has filed legislation allowing the number of signatures to be required to be reduced from 50 to 10. And, and for the filing date to be, the law sets forth 49 days, and I think it can be reduced to 36 days prior to the election in the event that the caucus is canceled and it is too close to the nomination paper deadline. Because really, a week should be allowed between, you know, when, when the caucus is canceled and the nomination paper deadline is in place.
So, oh, sorry, Kari. Based on what you just said, then it probably would make sense not to publish the original nomination paper deadline at this time.
Well, that's set in state law. So I don't, my thinking is that if the, if the election date is announced and the nomination paper deadline is announced, then if there are any changes, the obligation is to inform the public of any changes. But, but at least there's a starting date of, you know, that the, that the law currently sets forth to be the deadline.
Okay, so originally you had identified Thursday, February 4th, 2021 for that purpose. So maybe under these circumstances, it should be added to the calendar then.
That makes sense. Yeah, yes.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, Jane, you had a question?
And, and forgive me if this was already stated and somehow I missed it. When will we know about the legislation? Because we're sort of pinning our approach on that.
So they are working on it actively. I do know from hearing from legislative staff that they are, and there's a lot of unknowns, which is why it's hard to report. But, but I'm told by, by the town of Bedford that the governor's office has given them a commitment that they will address it before the end of the session. And the thing I should add is, our council and Bedford's council are the same firm. So there's, there's been, it's, it, so we have a lot of insight into that model and why it works or doesn't work for us. So that's one of the reasons why we've gravitated towards that approach, because our council has, the council has evaluated a lot of the same variables.
Matt?
So I continue to be uncomfortable with these really accelerated dates, because, you know, it's six weeks from today that the caucus would be held. And my concerns are, first of all, just identifying the enough candidates and having a, you know, a well-contested election that would help the public. But then, secondly, that normally we have our campaigning season concurrently with the public hearings for town meeting. And there's really a top of mind among the public of the key issues facing the town and the candidates' positions on them. And at this point, the proposed election date would be prior to any public hearings taking place. So that, those are two issues. And then another is just to think about how the evolution of, you know, the vaccines availability and also just the changing regulatory environment here could affect the caucus, first of all, that's so early that we almost certainly could not hold an in-person caucus, and we are depending upon legislation. And then the election, that if it were in May, there's the opportunity that there could be a much freer, more in-person type of event. Of course, hoping the early voting indeed would be, you know, extended. And, you know, I think that just hoping for one type of election, of legislation for, you know, town caucuses versus another type of legislation, which is the extension of early voting, which would apply to lots and lots of towns. And I think is very, very likely. It just seems like we're letting one constraint really drive our decision and in a way that may lead to a less positive result in terms of the quality of the election that we hold.
Other comments?
Okay, Kari, I don't know if, in terms of the early voting, I don't know if you've heard anything from other clerks about whether or not this consideration of extending that, but I have heard none. And Matt, I think that, which sort of is, I think you're, I think, you know, I agree with you. But, you know, and in terms of the, you know, the, the ability for a full contested election where we get to learn candidates' positions through the public hearings, that's, that's not really my side of it. I stay out of that part of it. It's more trying to find out logistically and meeting the legal deadlines and also the guidance for gatherings and things like that. So that's the strictest way we're looking at it. But Kari, I don't know if there's anything on the radar about early voting?
I did see that the city of Newton has proposed having early voting, almost copying all of the language from early voting into their local elections. Of course, they don't have, they wouldn't have a city election this year. But they are, I don't know, I'm not sure if they're looking at incorporating it into their normal elections just to adopt it, but I haven't seen it anywhere else.
So I think the unfortunate thing is, we have to go with what we have at our disposal here and now. And maybe the answer is we end up having an outdoor caucus on January 25th and pray for warmer weather.
Kari, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit here. Do you have a recommendation based, you know, we, some of these issues we discussed previously. Clearly, we have some select board members who still feel strongly about their position and have added some additional comments. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, right now, we're, you know, we've, we've been looking at March. So my, my thought process has revolved around the, a March election date. And the benefit from the town clerk's office standpoint is that we are in, in one location for the entire election process from caucus to the election. And if it was to be, if the election was to be later, I can certainly understand the benefit from the perspective of the caucus if it had to be an outdoor caucus. But it seems that the legislation can move fairly quickly when the governor proposes it. As far as the, the timing from the, the date of election to the effective date of office, I think that, that is an issue. I don't know if, if it can be solved so easily when there are so many unknowns around a pandemic. Even with the vaccine, you know, distribution coming, how much do we want to change in anticipation of being in a different place? The tradition has been that a caucus is at the end of January and, and the election is in March. So we're prepared to, to, to do that. But the unknown, as, as Mr. Johnson alluded to, is that we don't know what can happen with the caucus.
Correct. Thank you. Yeah, clearly, there is a long history of people being familiar with this timeframe for, for the election. So that is true. Any other comments from board members? Well, as, as difficult as this is, I really feel as though we, we have to press ahead. And I'd like to recommend that we, with the addition of adding the town nomination date that Kari had previously given us of Thursday, February 4th, 2021. Do we need to specify a time of day, Kari?
No, that's in the law, that it's 5:00 PM is the deadline for nomination papers.
Okay, so with that addition to the existing draft, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the annual town meeting calendar as amended.
Okay, thank you. A second?
Second.
Terry, thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo. Ms. Ackerman.
Hi, and, and I just want to say, you know, if we need to amend it, we can amend it, but I agree with Linda, we need to put all those other dates out. And so, hi.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson.
Nay.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Hi, and I would also add similar sentiments to Terry. This is a, this is an approval now to get something started, but we need to stay very, very closely, close to the process of the legislation.
Thank you.
And myself, Ms. Bates. I, and I support what Terry and Jane said too about flexibility.
So that is a vote of for approved and one against. And I, and the chair so declares. I certainly hear everyone's caution, as is mine, about we need to stay on top of this every day here with our legislative process. So thank you, everyone, for your input and including you, Matt. I do appreciate the sentiments you're expressing. All right. Last week, we introduced, I guess, the topic of the Select Board FY21 Action Plan. And I had provided a first pass to the best of my ability at capturing some of the activity, of which there's been quite a bit this time period since September, since the last town meeting, towards realizing the goals. Clearly, there's a lot more work to do. We talked last week about, this is so unusual in terms of, we're already into the second quarter, so to speak, even though the budget started July 1. And so, you know, we're sort of straddling when we're talking about quarters. But in terms of items that have been listed here, I do want to add, before I open it up for conversation from everybody, that this last week, there has been a fair amount of activity, additional activity with legislative testimony between, in front of various committees regarding the articles, three of our articles, actually. Stephen and I were involved with actual live testimony for the additional alcohol licenses with the Joint Committee on, I can't remember the full title, but anyway, it has to do with licensures and consumer protection and professional licensure. And so, and we testified live as well as submitted live written testimony for that. On the next day, Friday, in the morning, I submitted written testimony to the Joint Committee on Revenue for the Senior Means Tested Property Tax Home Rule Petition and Special Legislation that's there. And some of these things just actually unfolded at the nth hour for a couple of these things. So you just, you know, we've already approved it at a town meeting, and the select board has identified it as goal, so it had to roll. The other item, I've had conversation with, following up with everyone on the Home Rule Petition Regarding the Building Permit Surcharge for Affordable Housing, which is a carryover from FY19 Town Meeting. And that is currently in play. We don't know. So we're counting on activity from the legislature between now and the end of the year. And we're just going to have to, and we're, we need to literally follow this every day as it moves. And that's what we're doing. But every time there's an opportunity for us to act on it, we're acting on it. In some cases, we just have to wait and see where it goes. So that's an update. Just, yes, Stephen?
Yeah, I just, one of the things, and this kind of goes back to our prior topic of conversation. One of the things I want to add is, this is a very unusual end to a legislative session for obvious reasons. And so there's, when you get to this stage, normally there's a certain level of predictability about what will get taken up and what won't. And in talking to our legislative delegation and their staffs, even they really aren't really sure what's going to get through and get approved and not. And so I guess what I would just ask, and we are tracking it every day. Even today, there was email correspondence between staff and I about, you know, following up questions about the liquor license bill and I think the permit issue. You know, I started my career in a legislative environment. This is unusual, I think, by anybody's measure. So I think what I, the point of all this is, I think that we need to be patient and, you know, know that we're just not following any kind of playbook that has normally existed. So I just want to make sure that people, we are tracking it every day, but it's, it's really an unusual and strange time for an end of, for an end of session.
Certainly is the context, for sure. Thank you. All right. So I'm opening up to things that I missed on capturing at least current activity that we've already accomplished on these goals that someone might want to add to, or. Terry?
First of all, Linda, thank you so much for putting this on the agenda for a lot of reasons. And one of the best reasons is, instead of feeling overwhelmed that we have three pages of goals with many, many items, you can see how much progress we've already made, even in this COVID year. So it's, that's a very good piece of news. And I appreciate you putting together this update. So I took a look at your update and compared it to the goals document. I had the two documents that I looked at together. And so I had some specifics in there. If you want, like, three or four items, if you want me to talk about those.
I think it's as good as any place to start.
Okay, so in the effective governance area, about halfway down, request specific actions, steps for recruitment, consider committee consolidation as opportunity presents itself. So this is about the green card system. And it relates to goal number eight, which said, we've done quite a bit of work with the subcommittee and, and then with this board altogether. I think the one thing that we haven't totally finished yet is this last sentence in number eight that says, ensure that all volunteers are acknowledged for their willingness to serve. So I just want to see if we can still work on that. see if we can still work on that. And then in this section, the last two bullets, I think, are definitely priorities in my mind, either to be completed this quarter or at the beginning of next quarter, the town manager evaluation and the Affordable Housing Task Force to be seated. I'm really happy to see those in blue and, you know, coming up. And then in the balance equity diversity section, looking at the goals, goal number six, I think we should reevaluate during this COVID time. Goal number six is assess the capacity of existing town social service programs to meet the needs of the town population and identify funding. And I think that that's always a really important objective, but even more so right now with COVID. We know a lot of people are struggling, so I'd really like to see that be something we work on in the second quarter. I know it was straight out of envision conquered, but now I think it's even more important. And then finally, just to add another thing that we could think about for the second quarter, might be reviewing the charter for the peg access. That was also one of the goals that we had in our original sheet.
Yeah, it'll be more like the third quarter, more or less. But yes. Yep, Matt? Thank you.
First of all, I echo Terry's comments that, first of all, you've made a nice summary of what we have accomplished, that we have accomplished quite a bit, which is great. And that you have identified a couple of the very top priorities to take care of, you know, especially the town manager evaluation, and you've specified this quarter, which I think, if we can pull that off, I mean, again, I don't know what, how your quarter alignment, I'm assuming the town fiscal quarters, so I'm thinking this is Q2.
Correct, that's the way I'm thinking, that's the only way, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and then, you know, in Q3, you know, I sent you a brief list of just bullet points of the things that I thought maybe we could add to your list, you know, and also proposed, you know, Q3 versus Q4, you know, assuming that beyond the evaluation of the town manager, really not much time is left for anything this quarter. So, and the other nice comment that, you know, is that I think that this isn't overwhelming. It's just like Terry said, we can get through this. And so, you know, beyond seating the committees and reviewing the Peg Access Advisory Committee Charter, you've already pointed out that we need to review the StarMet NMI report that will be coming out in January as a draft for us. That we've already done the committee volunteer process and the citizen correspondence policy, but we need to finalize those after you get feedback from the committee chairs. And then we need to prepare our Select Board warrant articles, at the minimum, the Affordable Housing appropriation, you know, in Q3. And then we also will be faced with what to do about Patriots Day and so forth for public ceremonies and celebrations. Then it seems like that leaves for Q4, looking at the wireless communication access and policy. Of course, you know, making the arrangements for town meeting and holding hearings and taking positions. And then providing input, sort of directional input on the beginning of the development of the housing production plan. I think that really our priorities for housing production should be evident from the beginning of that process, which will be happening starting in the spring, I think. And then to review the town social service program coverage, I think that's one of those things that we said we do, and in this COVID time, I think that we really need to see, you know, is the safety net working or is it not? And so, we've done some work on the economic vitality front, but maybe not so much on social program review. So those were some things that came to mind, and again, you know, when I look at all of those, of course, we have our regular day-to-day stuff that we have to do, you know, poll petitions and everything else. But if we could just sort of put these in in different weeks on the agenda, and I can see too, that we could probably move to a bi-weekly cadence and still get them, so.
I, yeah, I'm mixed emotions on that, given what happened this last week and what happened the week before and what happened the week before. But it's it's a good goal. Yeah, and thank you for your feedback on that. I would just suggest a slight tweaking to it, and that is our first town meeting preview meeting is on February 27. And you'll be surprised how much preparation for our town meeting is already in play towards the end of this third quarter. So I think some of those items cut across both third and fourth quarter. But clearly, you were right, Matt, in terms of, you know, the bulk of the public hearings and then some of that other work is clearly fourth quarter. So that would just be a minor tweaking I would do with some of the things you suggested, so thank you for that. Comments from other board members? Jane?
I would just like to add my thanks to your your leadership on this as well. And I agree with many of the points that both Matt and Terry brought up. I guess I'm sort of in the point of there's, we know this is going to change, we know there are going to be surprises with the pandemic being the largest bucket of ice water that could be thrown on any of us on this. And I guess to that point, while I would be the first to say going to a two-week schedule on our meetings would be ideal. I don't see a point where, until we've gotten through the end of this quarter and established for ourselves some sense of the vaccine, you know, other things going forward, I don't see how we would be able to accomplish, to stay on pace and move to a, off the weekly cycle. So and otherwise, I just think we have to put our heads down and keep going.
Thanks, Jane, for that. You know, I think, you know, Terry and Matt were terrific stepping up to take on the green card policy statement and looking at, you know, what supports were needed there to improve the process as a whole. You know, there are some topics that are just not as easily delegated, but I think we need to continue to look for places where that can happen. And some of the topics that we've identified for the third and fourth quarter, there are some things there that may lead, again, to subcommittees to just get us partway, that could help with the overall workload. I'm in no way refuting the comments that have been made about the likely necessity for weekly meetings. I'm being less optimistic than I was a couple of weeks ago. I think it was more of a hope a couple of weeks ago, as I was feeling like, oh, my gosh, won't this stop for a little while? But, you know, it's just the nature of what we're dealing with. Sue, did you have some additional comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, I just, I agree with that, with a lot of what everyone has said in about the the ability or exploring the ability to delegate some of these items to a subcommittee and being flexible about the timing of our meetings, because it doesn't look to me like that could change to bi-weekly anytime soon, but let's keep that as a goal and see how things evolve.
All right, Terry?
Just very quickly, I need to amend my comments. Matt was correct. I didn't have the quarter numbers correct, because Linda, you started as chair in September and we're all off sync. So when I said quarter two, I think I meant quarter three, I think everybody knew what I meant, but just
We did, we did.
Okay.
But thanks for mentioning that. All right. So continue to stay alert to activities, you know, because even where we captured some activity that we've already been involved in or accomplishments that we've already made, as I said last meeting, many of these will have a part two, part three to the same goal. I just wanted to capture the bulk of what we had done this time period. So if there are no further comments about that, Stephen, I'd just like to ask you, the town had the two overarching goals, and I'm wondering if there's anything new to report on that in terms of diversity was one of them, in terms of addressing that, in terms of activities?
Well, we've reached out to someone, we've reached out to a couple of people who do some training and education in that regard, in fact, we had someone who does that work evaluate goal number one and thought it was, you know, well-stated for the purposes we're really trying to achieve. So to be honest with you, not a lot. I would say on goal number two, we are, that takes really the shape of, in many ways, very small efforts on evaluating policies and procedures. And just to give you a small example, we were working today on the winter, on the, you know, inclement weather policy in light of our ability to telework that didn't exist, you know, when that policy was drafted and what that changed means for employees and to make it a little more, a little easier for people to not have to drive in to work in the snow and still be able to, you know, do their jobs. So those are the, so it's a lot of small ways, but the other thing is we're not really trying to encourage people to take some time off and do what they need to do. But in terms of the goal number one, not yet. It's on our minds every day, but we haven't really gotten the, like we just talked about, getting that space where you can stand still and say, okay, here's really what we need to do on this next, we just haven't gotten there, sorry.
Well, hopefully, just as we're trying to outline our own marching orders for the third quarter, maybe somehow, barring everything else that comes up on a daily basis, which I'm witnessing firsthand along with you, so. All right, that would be helpful, I think, to see what you can do to somehow elevate that.
Yeah, I mean, if, so can I just share one more thing about that, because I should have really stated this during my town manager's report? If we were writing those goals today, vaccine distribution would be the top goal. And I will tell you that now that we know that that's coming soon, in terms of organizational priorities to the town departments, I've already told SMT, you know, figure, doing what, everything we can to get vaccine distribution right is our top organizational goal. You know, it's not going to disrupt the work of every town department, but there are town departments that are going to focus on that. So I think that speaks to how fast things are moving, but that is top goal right now.
Yep, and it's illustrative of what we've been dealing with on a weekly basis here, so we'll do the best we can. All right, and if there are no other comments right now about this, that was all helpful, comments from you and feedback, I'd like to move on to committee nominations.
Committee nominations, Dorcas Miller of 75 White Ave to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30, 2023. Anne Marie Alton of 247 Law's Brook Road to the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee for a term to expire on April 30, 2023. Scott Wood of 241 Barrett Mill Road to the Climate Action Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2023. Robert Norton of 189 Conant Street to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee for a term to expire April 30, 2025.
All right, thank you. We have several sessions we have to go to after this one, so I would like to table, Jane?
I guess I don't have to, nevermind.
Okay, I'd like to table the committee liaisons and reports unless there is a critical time-sensitive item that someone needs to report out on. Otherwise, we'll table it till next week. Is that okay? All right, thank you, everyone. Miscellaneous correspondence. We received one request from a business owner to increase the discount on a liquor license charge. And we've received multiple correspondence from one butter for the Astro Woods Trail citing alleged trail problems. And I would just again remind the public to please try read carefully all of the trail rules and comply with implementing them.
If I could just add to that, also, I know that we are in the process of looking to hire a ranger to increase that. Obviously, the town can't hire anybody until they've got a list of folks to interview for it, so. I just don't want it to be seen as if we're not acting on it.
Thank you. All right, public comment. Are there any comments from the public? Jeremy, are you seeing any comments from the public?
I have not seen any raised hands, no.
All right. So before we adjourn to executive session, the holidays are upon us, and I just want to wish everyone the best of the holidays. And I would now like, we will be adjourning to an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the case of LY versus Kestrel Kruger, CCTV Inc., Town of Concord and Concord Carlisle School District in an open meeting that may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the committees as declared by the chair. That is the first motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And this is not to return to open session. However, we will be reading a second executive session motion after this. Susan, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. That is unanimous, and the chair so declares. The next executive session will be to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Estherbrook Road. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. And we will, the board will not be returning to open session.
So move.
Second.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That is unanimous, and the chair so declares. Thank you, everyone. In the Select Board, will you please sign out and then sign in again as quickly as you can? Thank you. Good night, everyone.